I think we'll make you all die.
Yeah.
Yeah. We've sent out another.
Well, there's a reason why we're doing that.
We're not still up here. We're still taking yours.
Yeah.
We're not raising them.
We're not raising them.
Or get the, or try to get the.
Yeah, because it's not ours.
Yes.
Okay. That's because it's fixed.
She definitely said.
Trying to get to the end of this year without.
You come out for that.
Oh, we're going up against Chris.
Did you come out for that?
Oh, yeah.
You, you.
I'm tired of talking about me.
He wouldn't call them friends. I'd call them back.
Yeah.
I want to dig it up for him today because we had some snow.
It's that pocket.
There's something falling, but it's been here.
It's not that bad. And the snowball.
What is that?
Um, he just, he jumped me. Yeah. Well, he thought he was.
Messi.
Who do they say?
And I think I'll walk with that.
Was it?
Yeah.
You were in front of me. No way.
I think she must have started to do.
Okay.
Yep. Uh, okay. Is that Christmas? Yeah. See, I don't have the agenda for that. We want to start to.
Sorry.
Yeah. I think that's all you are.
I did define the way. Define the. Get through as quickly as you like.
I have to say this is kind of a mess.
Yeah, there you go. Sorry. I have here.
I think we really need to find, find.
Twice each other.
Okay. I'm still one more. I got the. No. Found it. This might be advertised. We're rolling. Much more than a panel. That's right. Um. I think that's all you are.
I did define the way. Define the. Yeah. Get through it as quickly as you like.
I have to say this is kind of a mess.
Yeah. Yeah. I have here. I think we really need to find, find. Find each other.
Okay. I'm still one more. I got the. No. Found it. So this might be advertised. So. We want to start to. All right.
Sorry.
I think that's all you are.
I did define the way. Define the. Yeah. Get through it as quickly as you like.
I have to say this is kind of a mess.
Yeah. Yeah. I have here. I think we really need to find, find. Find each other.
Okay. I'm still one more. I got the. I got the. No. Found it. I found it. I'll call this meeting in order. Uh, we're gonna start by reading the newspaper notice. We're gonna read that or just continue here?
We can read the, uh, ordinance heading real quick.
Would you please?
This public hearing is for the purpose of reviewing the 2025 budget ordinance, the 2025 tax levy ordinance, the water sewer rate, and the water sewer rates. So ordinance 1985, excuse me, council bill 1985. Um, would it be appropriating specific funds estimated to be required for the specific purpose of the city government hereafter, set for 2025, be it ordained and enacted, council would adopt the below. These, by the way, have been available for public inspection and then on the city's website, the second ordinance. Council bill 1986 would be living and assessing the taxes of the city of DuBois for the year 2025, the general city, uh, general fund, singing fund for the maintenance of the DuBois Public Library and the creation fund. Next, we'd be council bill 1987, amending chapter 340 of the code of ordinances of the city of DuBois to amend the rates for the treatment and set of sand clear sewage. Similarly, council bill number 1988 amends chapter 440 of the code ordinances of the city of DuBois to modify the water rates to be charged to customers of the city of DuBois. And the, uh, the other ordinance that we have on the agenda, ran through the last meeting, so that one's actually ready to vote on. But this time, we would ask if there's any public comment on the four ordinances.
Well, the. Any comments on the, on the four ordinances? Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, on the, on the water rate increase, increases?
Yes.
How much was the water rate, uh, Anthony Suplegio, uh, city of DuBois, Weber Avenue? Uh, how much are the water rates this year as compared to what they're gonna be next year? How much are they going up per thousand gallons?
Still $2. $2.
$2 per thousand gallons are going up.
Okay.
Okay.
So after $400,000 is $73. This would be 400,000 gallons is $73.
Okay, and that is, and that is to get us in line with Sandy Township rates?
Just start to.
I would just like to say that when I, when, once consolidation vote went through, I thought that their rates were supposed to come down to our rates, not our rates, we want to meet their rates. And I would like to, uh, express for the taxpayers of DuBois and the water rate users of DuBois that the council vote no on.
Thank you. Anybody else on any of the ordinances? We'll close that.
Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn the public meeting.
Second.
Second, any questions on the motion? Vote on the motion.
Dietz.
Yes.
Augenbaum.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Gelfin.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes. I call to order the meeting of the city council of DuBois at 6:00 PM for December 23rd, 2024. Pledge your allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, where our nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All those.
Dietz.
Here.
Augenbaum.
Here.
Jackson.
Here.
Gelfin.
Here.
Reesinger.
Here. Dumpster day is changing. Normally, it's the first Wednesday of the month because, uh, New Year's Day is the first Wednesday of the month. We are gonna hold dumpster day on the 8th, okay? So try to remember, if a magical thing, you can take a couch, you can take, uh, tea, you can take anything. Not anything, but anything that you would normally allow to be thrown away. But it's nice for bulk items that you have and go over there. Uh, I threw a couch away last month, you know, bought a new couch and threw it, threw it away. It was very nice. Bring the, you actually bring the backhoe to you, you push in the backhoe, they put it in the dumpster. Very easy, very nice bed of it. Uh, we did have an executive, uh, session. Um, mostly it was informal. We've got some information on the 2025 budget, although we did some legal where we did discuss the, uh, skill games. Uh, so those two things, okay? Uh, we're gonna open the, the meeting to the public, public comments. On the agenda items. Okay.
Excuse me. Denny Scrubba, one second.
Yeah.
Avenue, DuBois. I don't know if this is time for me to do this.
It's on the agenda.
I'm here to speak to you about the music in the park for 2025.
When we get to that, that item, we might. Okay. If that's okay, Denny. Yeah. I said it'll be right with it. That's okay? Yeah. Normally appropriate. Anybody else on any of the agenda items? Okay. Uh, we're gonna be trying something new now. We're gonna do a consent agenda. Rather than taking motions and seconds for things like staff reports, minutes, dispersments, um, you know, uh, the different bills, different parts of the bills we pay and things like that, we're gonna do that all as a consent agenda. Um, the agenda. It's gonna be, it's gonna be include the minutes.
Agenda, the minutes.
The minutes of the December 9th meeting, the public hearing meets from December 9th. It's gonna include all the check register. That's gonna be the autographs and the pension transfers. We're gonna do this all in one motion and it's $902,000, $272 is what we have total. Okay? I, I will tell you that the bulk of that is 900, what's the, what's the little numbers on it?
This is for.
This is just a, yeah, that's right, just the pension is $902,000, just for the pension, for the MMO that we, the minimum we need to pay. It's an astronomical number and the reason for this is because of what was done to the, the pension several years ago. Uh, this should be $300,000 or $400,000 and it's $900,000 now. It's $30,000 an employee. This doesn't include the, the police. This is just the non-uniform pension that we're paying almost a million dollars for, okay? Like I said, it's $30,000, $34,000 a person, I think? About that, okay? So, uh, it's also the Penn Invest payment. That's $1,316,000 and some change. So if those two, if I could have a, a motion for all those, please?
So moved.
Second. Properly move a second. Any questions on the motion? Vote on the motion.
Dietz.
Yes.
Augenbaum.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Gelfin.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes. Denny?
Okay. I'm here to talk to you about the music in the park that we call Music Fest for this coming year in 2025. Uh, if approved, I would like to get started on it sometime right after the first of the year, after the holidays get over. And, uh, probably do nine concerts like we did last year. There were two, uh, in June, the 19th and 26th. We did not have one, uh, 4th of July. Then we pick up with the 17th, 24th, and 31st. Then you go into August for the 7th, 14th, and 21st. Last year, you allotted me like $8,000 towards that. I was way under. I didn't look up the records, but it seems to me I was, you know, like around six. I've been looking into a couple of other things here and, uh, I'm kinda proposing maybe to have a little bit of a cushion at nine this year. I'd say I'm gonna use it, but, uh, I was asking about that. I talked to Dan Wallace already. He's on board with doing the sound if we're gonna do this. And the only other thing I was kinda wondering about, I feel even like with anybody that uses our stage in the park or community days, DuBois days, whatever, okay? Even the concerts, we have a bird problem there and, uh, they're doing her business. Like on the, you know, on the floor there and this past summer, there was a lot of it just on those utility boxes where you plug in, just running down the sides and everything. So I didn't know if there was anything that could be done, like netting being up there. I think it's pigeons, you know, but anyhow, that's what I have.
We'll, we'll look into that.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
For the board's knowledge, we did budget $8,000 again this year.
Yeah, we budgeted eight.
Do you need a motion on that or?
I don't think so.
Good, sorry, you budgeted eight.
Yeah. All right. Unfinished business?
On today's.
Yeah, we have five council bills on the agenda. They've been properly advertised, reviewed, gone through public hearings in order to get to today where we'll be able to take a, a vote on those bills. Council bill number 1985. This is the one that sets, become the ordinance that sets the 2025 budget. I'll need a motion for that.
So moved.
Second.
Properly move a second. Any questions on the motion? Vote on the motion.
Dietz.
Yes.
Augenbaum.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Gelfin.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes. unfinished business?
On today's.
Yeah, we have five council bills on the agenda. They've been properly advertised, reviewed, gone through public hearings in order to get to today where we'll be able to take a, a vote on those bills. Council bill number 1985. This is the one that sets, become the ordinance that sets the 2025 budget. I'll need a motion for that.
So moved.
Second.
Properly move a second. Any questions on the motion? Vote on the motion.
Dietz.
Yes.
Augenbaum.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Gelfin.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes. Proposed ordinance 1884 setting the 2025 water rates. To, uh, propose a resolution to set and authorize?
You just did that one.
We just did that one. So there, there was a typo in the agenda. It says 1884 setting. Water, it should say sewer rates.
Got it.
Now we're on to council bill 1988. Proposed ordinance 1885. That's what's, that's what's next. Okay. Oh, so the, the difference is that there's the bill number and then we already know what the ordinance number would be. So that's why there's the confusion.
Okay. Yeah, it's a little different than what I'm used to.
We just passed 1884, which was the sewer rates.
Right. Now we need to, we need to pass 1885, which is the water rates.
Yeah.
Yes.
Correct. Ordinance number 1885.
85. Interest council bill 1988.
Correct. I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 1885.
Cross reference.
Second.
Properly move a second. Any questions on the motion? Vote on the motion.
Dietz.
Yes.
Augenbaum.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Gelfin.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes. Counsel, council bill 1989, which becomes ordinance number 1886. Um, this is, this is needed because Clearfield County changed its tax assessment predetermination ratio. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Properly move a second. Any questions on the motion? Vote on the motion.
Dietz.
Yes.
Augenbaum.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Gelfin.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes. Proposal ordinance number 1883 setting 2025 tax levy. Um, I'll need a motion for that.
That's what you just did.
87. Oh. Okay. Yeah. Council bill 1987 become ordinance number 1884 and sets the sewer rates. Do I hear a motion to adopt this?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Properly move a second. Any questions on the motion? Vote on the motion.
Dietz.
Yes.
Augenbaum.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Gelfin.
No.
Reesinger.
Yes. Proposed ordinance 1884 setting the 2025 water rates. To, uh, propose a resolution to set and authorize?
You just did that one.
We just did that one. So there, there was a typo in the agenda. It says 1884 setting. Water, it should say sewer rates.
Got it.
Now we're on to council bill 1988. Proposed ordinance 1885. That's what's, that's what's next. Okay. Oh, so the, the difference is that there's the bill number and then we already know what the ordinance number would be. So that's why there's the confusion.
Okay. Yeah, it's a little different than what I'm used to.
We just passed 1884, which was the sewer rates.
Right. Now we need to, we need to pass 1885, which is the water rates.
Yeah.
Yes.
Correct. Ordinance number 1885.
85. Interest council bill 1988.
Correct. I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 1885.
Cross reference.
Second.
Properly move a second. Any questions on the motion? Vote on the motion.
Dietz.
Yes.
Augenbaum.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Gelfin.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes. Counsel, council bill 1989, which becomes ordinance number 1886. Um, this is, this is needed because Clearfield County changed its tax assessment predetermination ratio. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Properly move a second. Any questions on the motion? Vote on the motion.
Dietz.
Yes.
Augenbaum.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Gelfin.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes. Counsel, council bill 1988.
Correct. I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 1885.
Cross reference.
Second.
Properly move a second. Any questions on the motion? Vote on the motion.
Dietz.
Yes.
Augenbaum.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Gelfin.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes. Counsel, council bill 1989, which becomes ordinance number 1886. Um, this is, this is needed because Clearfield County changed its tax assessment predetermination ratio. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Properly move a second. Any questions on the motion? Vote on the motion.
Dietz.
Yes.
Augenbaum.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Gelfin.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes. Counsel bill 1989, which becomes ordinance number 1886. Um, this is, this is needed because Clearfield County changed its tax assessment predetermination ratio. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Properly move a second. Any questions on the motion? Vote on the motion.
Dietz.
Yes.
Augenbaum.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Gelfin.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes. Proposal ordinance number 1883 setting 2025 tax levy. Um, I'll need a motion for that.
That's what you just did.
87. Oh. Okay. Counsel bill 1987 become ordinance number 1884 and sets the sewer rates. Do I hear a motion to adopt this?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Properly move a second. Any questions on the motion? Vote on the motion.
Dietz.
Yes.
Augenbaum.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Gelfin.
No.
Reesinger.
Yes. Proposed ordinance 1884 setting the 2025 water rates. To, uh, propose a resolution to set and authorize?
You just did that one.
We just did that one. So there, there was a typo in the agenda. It says 1884 setting. Water, it should say sewer rates.
Got it.
Now we're on to, uh, council bill 1988. Proposed ordinance 1885. That's what's, that's what's next. Okay. Oh, so the, the difference is that there's the bill number and then we already know what the ordinance number would be. So that's why there's the confusion.
Okay. Yeah, it's a little different than what I'm used to.
We just passed 1884, which was the sewer rates.
Right. Now we need to, we need to pass 1885, which is the water rates.
Yeah.
Yes.
Correct. Ordinance number 1885.
85. Interest council bill 1988.
Correct. I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 1885.
Cross reference.
Second.
Properly move a second. Any questions on the motion? Vote on the motion.
Dietz.
Yes.
Augenbaum.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Gelfin.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes. Counsel bill 1989, which becomes ordinance number 1886. Um, this is, this is needed because Clearfield County changed its tax assessment predetermination ratio. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Properly move a second. Any questions on the motion? Vote on the motion.
Dietz.
Yes.
Augenbaum.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Gelfin.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes. Counsel, council bill 1988.
Correct. I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 1885.
Cross reference.
Second.
Properly move a second. Any questions on the motion? Vote on the motion.
Dietz.
Yes.
Augenbaum.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Gelfin.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes. Counsel, council bill 1989, which becomes ordinance number 1886. Um, this is, this is needed because Clearfield County changed its tax assessment predetermination ratio. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Properly move a second. Any questions on the motion? Vote on the motion.
Dietz.
Yes.
Augenbaum.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Gelfin.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes. On to new business. There are two resolution solutions and one personal request on the evening, personnel request on the agenda this evening. Revolution number 2024-0399, the amusement tax fee. This would set the fee consistent with the city ordinance for mechanical music devices. on the agenda this evening. Resolution number 2024-0399, the amusement tax fee. This would set the fee consistent with the city ordinance for mechanical music devices. And I'd like to have Matt explain this a little bit for us.
Yeah, so the intent behind this resolution is to change the license fees for skill games from, I believe, $100 annually to $500. That'd be per machine that's offered for public use. That'd be the gist of the resolution. So we can entertain a motion on that, to that effect. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Properly moved to second. Any questions on this motion?
No, is this just on the means of chance and not on pool tables, things of that nature?
Correct.
That's correct.
Yes. Any other?
So under Article 2 of the code, council is permitted by resolution to amend license fee annually. So we're going to do this effective for 2025. Starting January. Right.
And this is just the PA skill games?
Correct.
Not like the other games that are at clubs and things like that?
Claw games? No claw games or?
Pool tabs.
Pool tables or?
Pool tabs.
Pool tabs.
Correct.
Yeah, these are the skills, mechanical skills. Any other questions on the motion? Vote on the motion.
Dietz?
Yes.
Augenbach?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Gelfen?
Yes.
Reesinger?
Yes. Resolution 24, 2024-0398. This is a 2025 meeting schedule. It would set the meeting schedule for 2025. Ben, could you explain that for us?
Yeah. Briefly recap what we discussed at a previous consolidation, joint consolidation meeting. We're trying something new basically because the two governments are merging. We're trying to get the business all merged in advance as well. So the idea would be that pretty much everything that would be discussed will go before the Joint Consolidation Board. And then immediately following that meeting, we would break into the two separate groups and just ratify everything that happened in the previous meeting. That does mean that there will occasionally be things that this council does not, really does not pertain that much to the council and vice versa. But overall, you'll all be informed as to what the other is doing. We also won't be kind of chasing one board and trying to inform the other of what happened in the meetings and such. It also enables the township to drop to one meeting a month. There is however, an ordinance on your books that says that you will meet twice a month in regular meeting. And therefore, I did not mirror your resolution like I did the townships. Instead, we included a work session nine days in advance of the meeting. So sometimes that ends up being the first Monday of the month, sometimes that ends up being the second. It floats because it's tied more closely to the Joint Consolidation Board meeting.
That work session would be public though.
That work session would be public. And the other thing is I did not initially draft that resolution to say or regular meeting. And I would ask for that to be part of the approval. Whoever makes the motion to approve resolution 0398 also move to amend the verbiage of the resolution to say the work session or regular meeting. And in that way, we would have a less formal meeting. We could discuss more broad topics and such. But if we had to take action, then we could, appropriately posting an agenda 24 hours at least in advance and so forth. I think that this will result in more involved conversation on those work sessions, perhaps more public engagement and on topics that maybe would be broader than kind of the didactic things that we need to vote on specifically. It will also cut down on some staff time that we have in preparing agendas and then the difficulty that we have with running payroll every Monday and then also having meetings every Monday. It's just a lot on staff to kind of prepare for on Thursday and Friday for the upcoming Monday and then really long Mondays. So that's our motivation, kind of getting all of this on, for the most part, the bulk of the work on Monday, but also providing that opportunity the Monday before to kind of discuss, you know, the bigger, weightier things. Any questions for me?
Do you want to word the motion the way you want it to sound and then council can vote?
Yes. So this would be, I would be requesting a motion to approve resolution 2024-0398 with one amendment where it says work sessions add or regular meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Properly moved to second. Any questions on the motion? Vote on the motion.
Dietz?
Yes.
Augenbach?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Gelfen?
Yes.
Reesinger?
Personnel, human resource position. The management team is requesting that we create a human resources position to present this request. I'm going to call on Lisa.
Thank you. As we're merging those business entities, we are in need of a human resources administrator. There is a letter in your packet, but I'll hit the highlights. We would like to advertise and hire a full-time with benefits exempt position called Human Resources Administrator for up to $70,000. The consolidated board did agree to that last Wednesday. Your consolidation agreement necessitates the approval of the joint board as well. And we believe that this will be a crucial position. Currently, both communities have had their finance staff engage with human resources activities as well. And now that we're sharing a finance person, they're doing all the finances and all of the HR. And going to a 90, almost 90 employee community, we believe that this is a really critical role to cover risk and all the laws and responsibilities and policies that are involved in human resources. And so we would ask that you would approve this position for advertisement and to fill it. Any questions?
They would do safety also.
Yep.
And this would be also for the police side and the non-uniform side.
Great.
So all employees on township and the city.
I'll make the motion for a human resources position.
Second.
Properly moved to second. Any questions on the motion? Vote on the motion.
Dietz?
Yes.
Augenbach?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Gelfen?
Yes.
Reesinger?
At this time, we invite the public to offer comments on any items that they wish to bring before the council. Yes. And again, state your name and where you live.
Debbie McLean, 701 Monroe Street. I was just curious, how many skill games are we speaking of that are in the city presently? And then my next?
Not sure the exact amount.
Okay.
But they're all currently licensed, so those license to be renewed, we have to comply with the new fee, fee-based structure.
Okay. And then I was also curious, how much is Sandy Township charging for their skill games licensing at this time? And are we moving towards both licenses in Sandy and DuBois since consolidation is coming? Are they, eventually we're going to be the same?
It would have to be for 2026. Ultimately, they'll be the same. I can't speak to what Sandy Township does.
I was just curious what they're getting right now. And at this time, what are those additional monies being earmarked for? Because it's a pretty significant increase. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes.
Charlie McLean, 701 Monroe. I asked council quite a few months ago about getting some improved signage coming down to Boulevard. Talked to Chris at the time, it's been a while ago, regarding 219. I'm hoping you guys are probably still familiar. Since that time, we've had a truck come down through and take out a stoplight and have to get that put back up. Now, I believe it looked to me like he was in the right lane, which he should have been in the left lane. Now, that's still the driver's fault because he hit a fixed object. But if we can lessen the obstacles that are going to fall down and maybe take traffic lights out, I still think that's a really good idea. So if we could find out where the state is, because Chris told me that he'd pass it on to the state as far as, because it's only, there's only, the sign is one block away from where you have to be in the left lane.
Oh, and it's this big? Yeah.
Thank you, Pat.
It's this big.
So.
Yeah. The reason they took that sign down is because the sign has a dent in it and when its cantilever way out there, just away to the sign, they were worried about the post, you know, bending more, so they took that sign out.
Yeah.
So they have that, they have, that's going to be a new, in the spring, they're going to put a new sign up. I don't know what they can do, but we can get ahold of the state again. But I know that's why they took that sign up.
Okay.
There's people, twice it happened to be, somebody in front of me wants to turn left and it's muzzle stop traffic. Yeah, I think it's twofths as high. It's kind of crazy.
Yeah, so it definitely needs improved. And also regarding that signpost that got hit, until you can get whatever repairs are going to be permanent, wouldn't it be a good idea to put some reflective tape around that to draw the eye to it so that people can make sure they stay away from it when they go around that turn?
The state came and, let me know if I'm not speaking out of turn here, but the state came and inspected it, took the sign down and pretty much said it's okay. Am I right?
They took the signs down. We had the lights actually moved in towards the post mortar to take the counterweights off.
Yeah.
It's all under PennDOT's rule and the way it's sitting right now is the way it's going to be until the new ones put in. And that's why those signs came off.
Yeah.
Those signs are a lot bigger than you think they are.
And they're heavier, they're probably 100 pounds or so. It's a lot and when you get to weigh it on the end, it's a lot.
Oh, yeah, it would be. Okay, thank you.
We might have to live with it till spring, unfortunately.
Okay, yeah, just nobody else gets cut off or anything else right there.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, go ahead.
Hi, Linda London, 527 Rumbarger Avenue. When's the renovations that are happening at the new building? I have not seen the plans at all, but will there be metal detectors for safety for everybody entering those buildings? I know we have to do that entering schools in our area and in light of everything that's happening in our country for safety for everybody. I just am curious if that's part of the renovation.
I didn't see those. I looked at the plans, I did not see those. I don't think, I don't think we have that. I don't think that's in the plans. Anybody else? Okay, I'm going to close that part of the meeting now. Council comments?
Just like to thank everyone for their support throughout the year and wish everyone a Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy New Year. Everyone have a safe and healthy.
Merry Christmas to all and to all a good night. Go ahead.
Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Elliot. Have a great year.
Yeah, just appreciate everyone's, appreciate everyone's support and again, you know, Merry Christmas and happy holidays and looking forward to a new year, let's be sure.
We'll have those answers for you next time. I don't, I don't have them off the top of my head.
It's fun.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion?
Second.